Good evening. This is Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything else you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever and may possibly wind up as a TikTok video. To be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board. On participating tonight can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
And Tom Sanford here with a quorum of the board present, I call the meeting to order at seven thirty, seven forty P M, Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using a Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join the meeting. Ground rules, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or emotions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait till you yield the floor to state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, at this moment, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting that we had on eight sixteen.
I'm moving.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Carol McDonald.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, I. Motion carries unanimous to accept the minutes. Thank you all. Okay, we have three minutes to go before we have to take up our first item on the agenda. Is there anything other than the you scanned and put in the mail? That was about it, right?
Uh, someone was asking about fees and timing.
Oh, yeah.
Published anywhere?
That should be in the subdivision control, right?
Yep.
It's printed in there?
It's at the back.
I don't have it with me. I have.
Should be separate because it's going to change every once in a while, isn't it? I mean, we got inflation. We got, we need a fuel surcharge.
At least.
We should have a separate for a document that's got the fees and just posted on the website.
But it should be there at the end.
Which I don't think it should be in the subdivision document because then it's going to conflict as we change it. As we jack up the prices, what people see in the subdivision document is going to be wrong.
Well.
Right?
In the printed version or the?
In the print, well, either one.
Well, we try to change it at both places, right?
Well, I mean, we the bylaw we're sending out now is twenty eighteen, isn't it? This is the latest one. Yeah, the latest bylaw, twenty eighteen.
Um, I don't.
They were but weren't there by law changes last year?
Yeah, they were.
I, I think she's updated them and, and that the Attorney General has just approved the, the new set, so.
We should get news.
It'll be coming out now. They're, they're, they're printed on the, on the back page of the subdivision control law in Form A, B, and C are there. The regular zoning bylaw has the map on the back page, but there's a blank page opposite that map. We could, we could print the schedule of fees there.
Well, you know, it's pretty common now to have your price.
They should be online too, but we, we don't change fees. If, if we were changing fees a lot, I could see not including them in the text, but you know, what the heck?
I heard about new fee that other charge that we have to think about.
What was that, Jake?
There's a new fee. You know how we're in charge of stormwater management floods and all that stuff? Hudson is now assessing a I don't know what they call it, fee to everyone based on the number of square feet of impervious covering of the earth on their property. So like if you got a big parking lot, you're creating a big stormwater issue. They're trying to get you to pay a bigger share of the cost of fixing culverts and paving and all that stuff in town.
And this is on existing and new or just new?
It's annual. It's an annual fee, right? So all this work that's related to managing floodwater fall on the shoulders of all the taxpayers, they're trying to concentrate it on what to the people who create most of the problem. I think it's the theory behind it. For five thousand square feet, I think it's seventy-nine dollars a year or something like that.
We need to put that on the agenda.
We should think about it. I mean, I don't know whether it makes sense for us or not, but.
No, it's something we should talk about, though. Yeah.
Yeah, probably. As long as we have an agricultural exemption, right, Tim?
Right.
Which they do not in Hudson.
Really?
Yeah, but you don't have much impervious surface, especially on a farm. What do you plan in the parking lot?
Well, we got a big parking lot and a lot of roof area, right?
We should get a, a bonus for the amount of area that's not impervious.
That's true. We should. All that, yeah, all the
carbon sequence and all that.
We should get that. We should, then we should do, charge all the people that have pavement and give the money to us.
Anyway.
Back to the fees, you guys won't, don't buy the idea of having a one-page fee schedule that we post on the website.
Oh, yeah. No, I buy that.
Well, I mean, I'll write it up.
Yeah.
Just didn't know where to go to get it. And someone did, you know, someone sent an email and just asking that and also asked when what was the deadline? Do we have a formal deadline for presenting us an A and R to us that prayer to a meeting?
Before we post the meeting.
So, well, we need a little more than that, though, because I need chance to.
Right, like, should they send plans in for us all to see? Kind of thing?
I think.
Is it informal or formal?
I think it's formal.
Because if it's informal, there's a certain regulations and if it's formal, it has different regulations.
Oh, is that right? Maybe that we already have it then. Okay.
Yeah. And timelines and stuff.
Yeah. And the other issue is we're asking for a whole big pile of paper, which I get. I've been picking up the mail lately because I'm near there. And we get these big piles of paper, but when we're meeting remotely, we have a problem, which was why I was chopping the signed document up into little pieces and trying to stuff it through my scanner today. Should we request digital copies of everything?
Drop it off to me. I told you, I have a big scanner at work.
Yeah, I'm just thinking logistically, like if we want to try to be a little more timely about responding stuff. One of us should pick mail up a little more often and, and if I pick it up and I can just throw it in the scanner and then hit a button and send it to all you guys, that's easy. You know, if I have to bring it over to you and you have to take it to work and you have to scan it and then you have to send a file to me, mail it, you know, kind of.
Yeah, delays it a couple of days.
Well, and it it's hard to get that all those things to happen when you were both really busy, you know. Whereas if these, if they would send us PDFs.
That'd be helpful.
So easy to, to send it to everybody.
For conservation, I asked for paper copies for the file, but also digital copies to send out.
You do? Okay. See, I think we should do that because even if you want to be able to look these things over before the meeting, they have, it has to be PDF. We're not going to there's no way to get to the drawings before the meeting.
Even if it's something informal and it's a hand sketch, somebody can take a picture of it and send it.
Right, the, the zoning bylaw requires that they submit electronically.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Even for an A and R? Okay.
Yeah.
It isn't theoretic, theoretically, it's not complete unless we get it electronically.
Okay, so with the sign thing, that was not an A and R, so that was a
Well, they didn't, they've been doing it all the way along, which was paper. Yeah, they prefer to do it digitally too.
Well, I talked to, to James, the gym, the guy that was submitting it, even though he blocked my email somehow. Like I finally got him on the phone.
Somehow.
He said he was going to send it, but I never got it. I don't know whether he sent it and I didn't get it or he didn't send it or what. Tried to send him another email today.
On page one twenty-three, we say the Berlin Planning Board is incorporated. This was in two thousand and eight. New filing requirements for any plans submitted to the board. Following text explains the modification. Electronic submission requirements for submission A and R as-built plans and site plans. Hmm, a standard digital file template can be downloaded from the Mass GS website. The Town of Berlin will accept the North American. If you have questions, this publication, the publication may be assessed. So as incorporated new filing requirements. So that's, we did that fourteen years ago.
All right, well, to tell people that. All right, we had, we, who was here at seven forty-five?
Seven forty-five, we had the Highland, Highland Ridge A and R.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
I will promote Alex Para. There you are. You're muted.
There you go. No better plan now. Good evening. Hello, how are you? I'm good, how are you?
Thank you.
So we have an A and R plan before you. This was previously submitted, was requested that we show um, the not only the existing trail easement, but proposed additional trail easement, so revised plan, it's been submitted. Um, which shows the additional trail easement partly on parcel D, looping around the drainage area and onto parcel uh, B one, but looping around parcel B two. So if you see it on the plan, it would be on the southerly end of the property uh, above the parcel B two. And so that trail has been marked out and put on the plan. And then we have the additional note. Uh, note seven on the plan, which says that parcels B one, B two, and D are not to be considered individual building lots. So I think that meets the requests of the Planning Board. We're trying to uh, pull together the conveyance of the open space to Sudbury Valley Trustees. We had a uh, telephone conference yesterday with Sudbury Valley Trustees putting together an agenda to try to close this. Um, one of the things that also needs to occur and I provided you a proposed vote which is essentially to affirm that the conveyance of parcels B one and parcel D, you know, comply with requirements of the special permit in a particular section of the zoning bylaw. Um, I think it's seven point two point three. And because this convinced the S V T was not a part of the original proposal, though your zoning bylaw allows um, the open space to be conveyed to a nonprofit conservation organization. So we need that as a matter of record. Uh, and I would ask that you endorse the A and R plan and endorse the form of vote that we've provided. So the, um, the parcel itself, there's, you know, we didn't, you guys didn't change any of the boundaries or anything else. You just it's basically what we saw before with the additional information that we requested.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Like Tim's getting ready to. Oh, I'll make the motion. Oh, Tim, you're muted.
I've got the plan here. I'll make a motion that we approve a plan drawn by Cornerstone Engineering for Highland Ridge L L C dated, uh, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Showing additional, well.
There's a revision date if I may. It's August nine of twenty-two.
Yeah, okay, so there's a, so August, so the revised plan, August nine, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you. Yeah. Showing a modification to an earlier signed plan, including the trail easement. That's the only change, right?
Um, yeah, the addition of the trail easements.
And approval under the subdivision control on not required.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this plan as an A and R. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote to approve the plan. Carol McDonald.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
I'm going to abstain because I just joined the meeting, but it seems like, yeah.
The option. Tom Sanford, hi. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And then we also have the, the certificate of vote, which I mailed to Jay again today. It was part of the prior barrage of emails. And that asked the planning board to I can fill in the dates. I left it blank in that regard. Uh, but as I said, the essence of the certificate is that the conveyance, the S V T will comply with special permit issued for this development.
So I'm, I move that we sign the document titled Additional Trail Easement. Regarding homes at Highland Ridge LLC.
That one's to the Con- Conservation Commission.
I got the wrong one, right?
Yeah, it's a certificate of vote.
Okay, where is it? There we go. Certificate of vote. I move that we sign us the document titled Certificate of Vote, Planning Board of Town of Berlin. In regard to the, uh, Senior Residential Development Special Permit issued to Ken Chris Realty for Property at Highland Street.
And we'll date it today.
Dated today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, read that part again about Ken Chris.
It says that's what the document says. It says references made to that certain senior residential development special permit issued to Ken Chris Realty for Property at Highland Street.
So originally it was.
Dated April four, twenty nineteen. That's what's recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Voted most conveyance.
I just send you all a copy of the document.
Excellent. Um, I will second Tim's motion.
And we have a motion and a second to accept the letter of conveyance. Uh, is there any further discussion needed? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
I'll give Thomas the option to abstain.
I am going to abstain for the reason previously given, yes.
Thank you. Tom Sanford, I. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. You all very much.
The Conservation Commission thanks you all as well.
Where is the Mylar? J D.
Mylar.
Right here. Can you guys just sign it real quick?
Okay, so we can get that around everybody and then so it'll get filed. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you, Alex.
All right.
What do you want to do with the Mylar?
We got to, I, either you run it around or I go and get it and run it around.
Shouldn't we make the new guy do it?
Well, you could because I don't have to sign it since I abstained.
Impartial or something.
Welcome, Thomas.
Well, it's good. It's good to be here and my apologies. Work has been very demanding lately and I had a call that was supposed to end at six thirty. Which I thought was plenty of time for this. Yep, so apologies. It's good to be here.
Excellent.
Good to have you back.
Is this your first?
Thomas, are you the oldest in your family?
Yeah. You mean in my birth family?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Jo- Joni and I actually are both the eldest in our birth families and the eldest in the generation of our extended families. And people often say, how did you guys ever live together, you know?
Yeah.
That's Debbie and I are the same. We're both firstborn.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we had Megan, we told her that we were going to start a fund for her psychiatry later on.
Therapy.
We have, well, you're in rare company because we are, we're, there's a lot of us firstborns here.
All right, yeah. Well, I hope over, uh, I've been sort of the both busy over the summer with work and going back and forth between Berlin and the Vineyard, but I hope to catch up with each of you, you know, individually, consistent with the, um, public meeting law in some way or other and, um, talk about what you know, what the demands are on the board over the next year and what the aspirations of the board are over the next year and let, let's see what we can do about that.
Sounds good.
Excellent. So are we all, are we all firstborns?
Jay is not.
Ah, ha, ha. That's why he's taking the minutes.
No, and Charlie was before that. So we're in good stead here anyways. So moving along, we have, um, is that if an informal for gas station review?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So who's here for that? We've got four people in the audience. I don't know exactly who. All right, we got one. We have one hand up. Jim Bernardino, I think it said. Yep.
Can you promote them, please?
There's one and M Durant. We'll promote him as well. All right.
Good evening, all.
Good morning.
Well, welcome. Uh, well, uh, thank you for having us. Uh, Jim Bernardino with C M G Engineering. I apologize for not being able to attend for the first informal that we had. Uh, my counterpart, uh, filled me in as to the discussions that everybody had. Uh, thank you for the feedback. It was well received and we actually acted upon, um, many of your recommendations. Um, you know, as such, I take a couple of moments and, uh, kind of run through uh, what has transpired over the last month or two since the last time we met and discussed. Um, I don't know if it's possible to share screens. I'll be able to pull up the plan. Uh, I can point and highlight and things of that nature. We got, share my screen. Go to here.
Now, Tim, watch how he does this.
All right. All right, does everybody see a plan on the screen?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So, um, this is the revised plan that, uh, we were able to come up with. Um, some of the feedback that we received at the initial informal meeting with the board. Um, you know, kind of focused in on some site circulation, uh, customer access, you know, some, you know, it's more fluidity of the site. Uh, it was asked that if there was a potential to look at additional lands uh, to acquire adjacent to the, uh, property. Uh, I'm pleased to announce that the, the owner is, you know, under negotiations and probably near the ends of those to, uh, secure, uh, the property at three thirty-nine um, Old Central Street, uh, which is on the corner of Gates Pond Road, um, Coolidge and Old, and Old Street in the back. Our original, uh, conceptual plan had a limited area of here. So we had a concept that only incorporated a development in this area, which was just about one acre. Uh, with this, uh, agreement that we hopefully comes to fruition relatively soon. Uh, we were able to acquire that added parcel on the Hart corner, which adds, uh, another acre to the property. So pretty much would double the development site to, uh, just around two acres. You know, uh, with that, uh, we looked at the opportunity of further enhancing, um, you know, parking situations on site uh, as well as access and egress, um, you know, to the various streets that are surrounding it. Uh, we came up this, with this initial concept, which is still, uh, a work in progress, but thought it would be prudent to, you know, present this to some of the individuals in the town to keep the dialogue open and moving forward. Um, you'll know on some of the changes that we made, uh, we're implementing a, um, uh, slightly larger building. I believe in the initial, uh, concept plan, we were about forty-five hundred square feet. We're, we're increasing that to six thousand square feet on this concept plan, uh, just to provide, uh, you know, a little bit more amenities and services within that building that, um, you know, a, a larger development such as this would be, um, you know, it would be. you know, a larger development such as this would be, you know, it would be necessary to, you know, draw those individuals and make the customers experience a lot more satisfying. What we did was we also increased the number of MPDs. We added two additional pumps. To that, we enhanced the parking around the site. We're also contemplating implementing an outdoor patio area with maybe a few tables so customers could sit, relax for a few moments. That kind of goes hand in hand a little bit with a couple of electric vehicle charging stations. We all know that gas is, even though it's still on high demand, long-term future considerations, you know, EV is becoming part of, you know, modern society. So Nerea Energy takes a look at that relatively seriously and wants to be a part of, you know, those groups that provide those services to the demands that are forthcoming. So we do have a couple of electric vehicle charging stations, so we thought it would be worthwhile to give them a little outdoor area to sit, relax for a few minutes, maybe have a cup of coffee while their cars are recharging. We provided two driveways for the subject site. And currently we're looking at an entrance in from Coolidge and exit out into Gates Pond. These driveways, we believe, are consistent with the rules and regulations. But we are bringing a traffic consultant on board that will further help us with, you know, traffic demands, site circulations and egress and ingress and the like. So we expect that we may have some modifications to the driveways. We may enhance the width slightly. We may have it full movement in certain locations just so that customers have better options to get in and out of the site safely without causing any congestion, congestion or conflicts with onsite or even the adjacent traffic circulation. We've added a couple of proposed sign locations along the frontage. We have quite a bit of frontage now that we acquired that extra lot. So we're just showing a couple placeholders for the time being for freestanding signs. Again, we do have a placeholder for stormwater retention. Obviously, everything is going to be subject to a full engineering design. Once we get to the point of moving forward to the zoning board for our site plan, special permits and variances, all that may be applicable. Once again, the site will be on septic system. So we have a generic area that we've dedicated for the septic system, you know, subject to border health review and approval. We have met with the border health previously on the original concept plan. We will be doing so again with this updated modified site plan. Lastly, for utility wise, we still are going to maintain public water access from the town of Hudson. So we're not going to, or we're not planning on having a private well on the site. So we're hoping, hopefully going to be able to continue those, that relationship with the town of Hudson for the water services. You know, with that, that's kind of a general idea of what's happened since the last time we were in front of you. And so unless Mike has anything else to add, you know, on behalf of Nerea, you know, I'd like to open up to the board for further comments and questions. I'd just like to add, we haven't made any changes to what the architecture would be, so I haven't touched base on that, but I do have some of those preliminary elevations that were presented last time to the board. So we can go over that if, if you find that you would like to discuss that.
Thanks, Jim. For the record, Mike Durant with Nerea Energy. I am the construction permitting manager. And I'm glad to be before this board again from the last time that we presented our site plan. I just want to reiterate some of the things that Jim did talk about. We are a convenience store, so we are offering convenience to the public, to our guests. We're looking at proposing a larger store to provide increased offerings to the public along with the additional fueling dispensers and the EV parking, EV chargers. We're also providing a air tower as well. We also have our enclosed, our dumpster enclosure. And as Jim noted, some outdoor seating. We may also look at trying to provide some indoor seating as well, but depending on what we can get support on from this board that we're hopeful to receive tonight, we'll have to take a look at that as we develop our plans. So if there are any other further, if there are any questions from the board, Jim and I are happy to fill the questions.
So how many square feet is the total lot now?
Eighty-nine thousand square feet.
Perfect. Okay, good. When you go to the ZBA, I think the big question that you're going to have to address with this revised plan is that in the zoning bylaw section 621, we say that the maximum gross floor area for conforming lots, and I guess we'd argue that this is a conforming lot now in the commercial zone, because this is zoned commercial. A structure, a commercial structure cannot exceed 4,000 square feet. Now, we, years ago, we built in to the bylaw a provision that offered some relief to that, but you have to have a lot that's 130,000 square feet to utilize that option. So that's, that's not something that's available to you folks, but so when you were proposing the 4,500 in the first plan, it was going to require, well, you probably wouldn't have been able to push a structure quite that large, given the size of the law, but you were going to have to present to the ZBA and some sort of proposal to seek some relief from that section 621. Now you're at 6,000 square feet, you're up a couple thousand square feet over the, the limit. So that's just something that needs to be brought to your attention, I guess.
Yes, yeah, thank you for highlighting that. And we've had discussions on that and we are aware of the regulations and we're going to work with the zoning board to, you know, at least solicit approval of that through their appropriate course of actions, whether it's, I believe it's going to be through a variance. So we're going to have continued discussions with, you know, the building official and then ultimately put together the zoning board package, which would include addressing that topic.
How many square feet is the building that's there now?
Right now, this existing building for the gas stations is about 2,100 square feet. Then there's probably another thousand square feet of the retail, not the retail, but the residential house that's in the back.
Right.
All of some garages and things of that nature. So gross floor area of the existing lot that's there, you know, was in excess of almost 4,000 square feet when you look at the aggregate, but just the standalone gas station itself is just over, or just under 2,100 square feet.
Okay. And in your earlier plan, the number of filling stations was?
One, two, three, four. We had four previously. We had four previously. We're looking at 10 at this point with this one. So it's a relatively significant increase on that, just due to the fact that, you know, we do have the added area, the added expense, you know, that goes along with that. And we would think that the additional fueling positions would be warranted with, you know, these types of building improvements that are proposed on the site.
I mean, most stations that exist along interchanges on an interstate highway, four would be significantly lower than the average, I would imagine. So you're, you're moving, yeah.
That's what we're trying to get. We knew four before was what fit on one acre of land that we had. So we, with the added area, you know, getting us closer, you know, a little over the two acre area allowed us, allows us to get those additional, what we call MPDs and the dispensers to be closer to the, you know, the industry standards that where people, because we are in a great location next to the interstate. People want to come, but they're not going to come if they have to wait in line to get gas. So we were hoping that, you know, these added fueling positions help out with, you know, customer, you know, customer satisfaction and their experiences, get them in and out quicker, prevents congestion on site with people not waiting in line to get to a pump that's sticking out in the drive aisle. So we do believe that the added positions provide a benefit for the overall, you know, site circulation and safety to the customers.
And you're proposing just an entry and no exit off of 62 from the site, right? Is that what it is?
We're currently evaluating that closer. We put this to, you know, we put this plan together to try to develop a plan that is as close to what we call by right as possible. We were aware that the zoning board has allowances for special permits that could vary from those regulations on the driveways, both to the number, size and locations of them. So we're evaluating that to provide, you know, even a better access and egress from the site. We're going to be getting a traffic consultant involved once we get into the full engineering plans. So they'll be giving us some additional feedback. So we fully expect that we may, well, we will be most likely changing those driveway configurations to have maybe two-way circulations in both locations, maybe slightly larger. So that is not written in stone at this point. The driveway access points, we still have a lot more engineering review to be done on that. And we're, like you said, we're gathering the correct team with traffic consultants and the like to help us and, you know, to facilitate those designs.
I mean, we, we recognize that there's difficulty at the interchange between Gates Pond Road and 62. But
Significant.
But we also recognize that there's issues going in and out of the current station, so changing the pattern there. It'd be interesting to see what your engineer says because we've been trying to convince the state that they're might want to pursue some options for the interchange at Gates Pond and 62, but to no avail.
I, yeah, I think that's where the DOT right away ends, is right at that intersection.
Right.
So, you know, the driveways actually shown on the plan, even existing conditions, I believe, are all under the local highway department's jurisdiction. But I understand DOT could help out a little further to the west.
I mean, it doesn't make sense to talk too much about the traffic flow until the traffic study, but as a resident of Gates Pond Road and someone who frequents, well, kind of frequents that convenience store and who has tried to cross straight over from your side of Gates Pond Road across 62 onto my side of Gates Pond Road. I don't really know why, but it's easier with the in and out both on 62 than to try and cross all the way over from Gates Pond. Just, there was a bad accident there Saturday night at that intersection. They are fairly frequent, so.
Yeah, so you would be thinking about maybe a configuration like it's out there now that actually has two driveways, both in and out on both directions on the main road. And those are the things that we're contemplating right now and I'm probably sure that our traffic consultant is going to come up with probably the same conclusions that you, real life experience of, are seeing out there. So that's kind of why we wanted to bring it to your attention that, you know, we are looking to address those concerns and that's why we don't want to commit to any type of driveway entrance right now until we have those full, you know, full traffic studies and counts and things of that nature.
Yep, yeah.
You have somebody on board?
Not at this moment. We have a handful of different engineers that I've worked with and Nerea has worked with in the past. So what we're doing is after tonight's meeting, we're going, you know, we're going to get together as a team. We're going to set up our architect to get on board, traffic consultants. We may have some legal counsel to help us out with some variance applications as well. So we're going to formalize the team after tonight's meeting, take your feedback, share it with the rest of the team and then have a little bit more direction for everybody, you know, on the developer side to move forward with.
Okay.
Well, as long as we keep the moonscape in the parking lot, which keeps the traffic. If you guys actually get that.
The moonscape?
Well, the parking lot now has got craters.
Well, the vacant.
Craters and yeah, the big.
Yeah.
Cars parked in the craters.
Well, you can't blame them for that. That's the result of meteorites, so.
Right.
Exactly.
I'd like to say, first of all, I applaud you guys for acquiring the extra property. I was on the selectmen's board when we approved the alcohol license and one of the things we were very concerned about was that you guys were trying to pour a pint of beer into a half pint glass in terms of that, that business site. So I think that is, that is much to be applauded. My immediate reaction, and this is my, I did look at things beforehand, but this is my first meeting on the board, is you know, you're expanding the gas pumps significantly and you're adding two electric charging facilities.
I was going to bring that up as well.
I, I think, I think you've got that, first of all, I think you've got that wrong in terms of the future success of the business. So I would, I would suggest that maybe you guys look at at least a possible expansion of electronic vehicle charging stations. It strikes me as though such a station might not be inconsistent with being over a septic system or whatever. But I would, I would really urge you to look at that and because I think that beyond the thing, beyond the fact that I think it's probably wise from a business point of view, but you're the businessman. But I think that in terms of, you know, people being able to appreciate your project as a local project, to see more of a commitment on that side and less of a commitment to the petrochemical side would be advantageous to you as things go on.
Duly noted. It's very good comment. Thank you.
As far as the fast food aspect, do you, what kind of, I'm assuming it doesn't look like you're trying to plan for the future with any sort of drive up, which I'm sure you're well aware is not allowed in Berlin.
No, we're looking to, you know, appease our existing tenant. We have a Dunkin' Donuts franchisee in there currently leasing space. The intent is to give them a new space to come in and work. Probably the same size, maybe slightly larger than what he currently has. The final plans on that has not happened. We are aware of the limitations on drive-throughs in the town. So obviously, our schematic that we have doesn't lend itself to a drive-through in the future. You never know, we might get creative, but it'd be something that. We would have. We would have to try really hard to make a drive-through work with this configuration. But, um, but there's no intent to, um, making that those plans for the future at this moment.
And so the the you're anticipating that it will still be the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, we were anticipating that it'll still be the Dunkin' Donuts.
Can you remind me how many spaces you had in the previous plan? It looks like you you've got what up to close to forty now? Is that?
Parking spaces before, we had thirty spaces before. But they included the fueling positions, which so we had really twenty-two, twenty-two parking spaces before. And right now we have quite a bit more. Uh, we're at forty. Yeah, we got six. Twenty-two, twenty-six. And fourteen, forty, forty spaces. I want to cross this note off in here. It does not include the fueling positions. That's why we call them concept plans.
Nice increase.
Yeah, so i- it's definitely much better than. The existing conditions, we all know that, and even much better than what we previously had before. You know, we were, we were threading the needle with what we had before for, um, practical parking. Um, you know, for the smaller single lot that we had previously.
Well, as Thomas said, I I I appreciate too the fact that you've gone ahead and. Um, worked on acquiring that additional lot, because this cleans up that whole corner in a way that I think that the town would appreciate. Um. I I like Carolyn said, I'm interested in seeing what your traffic engineer says, because. That that ends up being the the problematic part of the whole proposal, but. Um, you've got land to work with now, so it seems as though there's there's opportunity here to improve on what's existing at least. So that's, that's a good sign. But thanks for bringing this in.
Yeah, it's good.
Agreed. Yeah, I I think from my standpoint, the the only thing will just be how the traffic is managed.
And and again, to emphasize my previous point. Um. Yeah, the idea that this, um. If you had more expansion on the, um. Electric vehicle recharging, I'd just like to point out that you're going to make more money. On people who. Can afford an electric car and wants a commodious place to charge it. Than you will for somebody who buys ten bucks of gas and a six pack of beer. So I would, uh. You know, I would urge you to think about that as you as you put things together.
Well, the fact that it's so close to four ninety-five might encourage people who are on long. Trips to recognize it's a great place to stop and charge the car.
Right.
And get it. Precisely, precisely, and get a donut and whatever, you know, yeah.
An avocado toast.
We're going to get, they have have to get another fast food chain.
No, Dunkin' Donuts has the has avocado toast, yes.
Not anymore, they don't. When's the best time you check?
Yeah, I've actually never had one, so.
Well, they're great, but.
Make it at home.
I was told this morning they were discontinued.
Well, they'll have to bring it back.
We can put that in, though.
That's right, it's part of the development plan.
Okay, we, uh, as the board members. Happy with what we see? Do we have any more questions or comments? Besides avocado toast? Thanks for coming in. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, you have to. Tim, you have to stop screen sharing.
I'm trying to figure out how to do that.
Oh, um.
Uh, I can close this down. Let's see, don't say.
Yeah, it's so if you move. Um. Let me see if I can do it for you.
Lightening and bold, yeah, I'm I'm looking for all.
I can do it for you. I got it.
There we go. Perfect.
Such power.
Do you have anything more for us, Jim?
No, I I think I'm, uh, I'm very good. I appreciate your information and, um. Your feedback and, you know, obviously we want to take it to heart again and, um. You know, look at those options and suggestions that you guys put forward, um. And try to keep the project rolling.
Perfect. Great, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, guys. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you both.
Yep, bye.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, our next agenda item is. From Emily from CMP, CMP, RC, CM. CMRPC.
There you go.
Trip over it all the time.
There we go. She should be coming up. There she is.
I I just want you to say I've I've turned off the video because I have an extremely pesty cat. Who is insisting on attending the meeting, so apologies.
Put that in the minutes?
Uh, it's recorded, I guess. Yeah. The the benefits and the problems of having Zoom meetings, you know?
Good evening, Emily. How are you?
Hi, I'm doing well tonight. How are you all?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, are you gonna play? Are you gonna play guitar for us?
No, that's, I don't play very well. I my main instrument is the viola and the violin, so. Maybe another meeting, I'll I'll break that out.
Yeah, next time, that'd be great.
Um, great, so tonight I have, let's see, a couple of updates. Um, so we're working towards planning for the community forum, which we decided. Uh, October eleventh would be a good day to hold that. Um, from, that's a Tuesday after the long weekend, Columbus Day weekend, I believe. And it would be held at six thirty to eight thirty PM. Um, so as long as that's, uh, still okay, there's no conflicts or anything with that. Um, evening can move forward with that date, uh.
Is that in person or in? In person or in Zoom?
I think we decided we're going to try for a hybrid, so I'll be there in person, running activities for people who want to show up in person, but I also have a link. Um, for people who want to participate online as well. Um.
And have we booked a room for that?
So I got in touch with Sandra and. I've reserved the, um, eighteen seventy Town Hall second floor for. October eleventh.
Perfect.
Okay.
And and, uh. I said, very good, and she said, you're responsible for setup, cleanup. All trash should be taken with you and the building should be locked up before you leave. But, uh. That's not complex, so we just have to anticipate how many chairs to put out and throw them out and. We can use that upstairs space, so that'd be great.
Awesome.
Great. Um, thanks for sending that up, Tim. Um, I'll just share, uh, the flyer that I had drafted up and just get your feedback on that. You see that already?
There it goes. Awesome.
So hopefully it's clear people can either show up at the town hall or, um. They can register if they scan this QR code, um, they just have to register with their name and email and then they'll get a link to join. Um, the forum.
Great. Now, we're going to do that as a mailing to everybody or?
That's another thing I wanted to talk about, just some promotional strategies. Um, I can email this out to everyone who submitted their email, um, when they took the survey. Um. Social media push would be great, the, um, the cable channel would be awesome.
I can definitely share it on Facebook.
Only we had an LED sign in the center of town to put it on that.
Oh, my gosh. Hudson High School now has one. It's horrible.
It's terrible.
Thank.
The one on the, uh, Main Street in Hudson, we were just talking about, I was talking about with one of the people in the select board in, uh. Hudson, everybody thinks that's horrible.
It is.
But I'm working on a proposal with a few other people that you're going to really like.
It better not look like either one of those two.
Anything like.
I have confidence in you, Jay.
And I've got a model, because I've been, we've been looking everywhere, trying to find a model that we liked. And it was riding.
We're taking up Emily's time, so.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Could, can we put? Um, Berlin. Uh, up there, Berlin Community Forum on housing or something like that, just so. We 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 push that a little more, um. And if I don't use the. The QR code. Um, fluently. Do we have an option to? Send them in a direction that allows them to through. Refer to my town government or something like that, so we could.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'll have a link.
We're gonna have to post it as a meeting, right? Because it's.
Right.
Tuesday.
But somehow we should.
Link to our, link to it in our agenda.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I think we should put a, you know, we should say, go to my town government if you, that's a third option, because. There may be some folks out there that, uh. Well, they may not have a smartphone and they.
Where where's the, um, QR code go? Does it go to landing page on some website or where's it go?
Um, it goes to like a Zoom registration link. Uh, let's see if I can.
And you can put your own text and graphics and stuff on that page or not?
Kind of, it's like linked to our CMRPC account, so it'll say, it's pretty basic page. It's just, um. Uh, it just says the the date and the name of the forum and you just add your. Uh, name and your email address. And then when you enter that in, it'll send you a link, um, to. The Zoom link, which will you will actually use to get into the forum.
So I just scanned it. Can you see? Oh, that's so great. Never mind. I don't think that's gonna, oh, oh, there we go.
That's it.
That's what came up when I scanned it and then just.
Because wouldn't you like it when you scan the QR code, when you like to? Get to more information about what it is.
I can add, there's a, there's a place where I can add a description of it. Um, so I think I can like add a little more information to it.
And I don't want to make things too complex, but should we mention the fact that this is part of our update to the housing production plan? And it's all part of that. We're saying meeting Berlin's diverse housing needs, but maybe just. Change that a little bit, just to say this is all part of a bigger. Effort to update our housing production plan.
Yeah, I had added just a little bit text at the bottom, just referring to the plan, but I can.
Oh, okay.
Your comments and your input will, um.
Maybe if you just change that to black text or something like that, so it shows up. I didn't even, I didn't even pay attention to it. Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
And what do you think about, since we have a temporary town center sign, getting it posted there? You know what I'm talking about?
The highway department flashy sign.
Is that the Lions Department?
Well, the Lions have one in James Garden.
Wait, but they put it back up. You can't put a very long message on it, but you could put. You know.
Well, you could put community housing forum, um.
Yeah, and a date. And if people were curious, they would. Use, you know, try to figure out what it is, I guess.
Is that, is somebody here on Berlin Neighbors Connect and have we? Typically push something out through something like that. It's been a long time since I've been on the planning board, so I don't know what our practice is.
Uh, yes, and I have, I am on Berlin Neighbors Connect and I have posted stuff for this. I posted the survey.
It's just a flash though, right? Because it gets pushed down as soon as somebody else puts something.
Uh, yes.
And it's kind of a small.
I mean, right, we can, we can ask Peter to pin it to the top for a little bit of time, too. But yes, that is the problem with posting to. A Facebook page like that, a forum.
Soon as the black bear walks across somebody's property, you're gone.
Oh, the big conversation this weekend was about people biking on the roads.
Can we address that issue by? Posting multiple times every. Like two or three days as we approach the event?
Or pin it.
Go up and it maybe, maybe and instead of or, I don't, I I I'm not really, uh. Up to speed on. The algorithms of this, so yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how long Peter would pin it for. Um, but maybe we. Put it out there and then ask him to pin it for the week prior.
And if you reposted it, would it automatically? Come to the top?
Oh, that's. Maybe.
Uh, just.
Until someone sees a bobcat.
Probably the most important thing, though, is is what you were saying originally, Emily, is to get an email out to everyone that participated in the survey. Did not, we didn't get email addresses for everybody, right? How many email addresses did you get?
Um, I can't remember how many exactly, but probably a good amount, um, maybe like fifty or so, something like that.
It's probably most of your audience, if you think.
Yeah, I agree. That would be a great way to to get people to sign up.
You said something you would do or the one of us would do?
No, I could do that.
Great.
Excellent. So I'll make some of the little changes that were suggested and, um, email this out to everybody, um. And that will be great. Um, I have one more thing I wanted to share quickly. Um, so.
Can can I ask one more thing? Do you do you want them to respond to you by a certain date?
Um.
I mean, is that? Would it be helpful to tell them we'd like to know by the beginning, well? By Friday, the 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 following Friday, the there.
Yes.
Not the following Friday, the Friday before.
Yeah, the previous, yeah, um. It would be helpful, but I know for these things, a lot of people might. Decide last minute if they're going, might depend on things.
You're going into a long weekend, so people's focus isn't going to be on this. They're going to be focused on where they're going for the weekend.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but my question is, so if you scan the QR code and you get to that page and you enter your information. Does the Zoom link automatically get sent to you? That doesn't have to be managed, correct?
I think it automatically gets sent or it gets sent, I I might set it for, okay, this will send to you. You like four days before the event or something. I haven't, this is my first time with this registration aspect of it, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if somebody is sitting at home and they're like, oh, tonight's the meeting. And scan the QR code and sign up, are they going to get the link immediately?
Oh, they would, yes, if they can sign up right before, yeah.
Okay.
I've certainly done that myself for meetings. All right, we feel good about this?
Yep.
Great, okay, so I just wanted to share one more thing, um, that I've been working on with the town of Spencer, because. Because we're also holding their hybrid, um, housing forum next Wednesday. Um, so for, usually we have a presentation for the forum and then the second half is a interactive mapping activity. But I wanted to create something, um, where people who are, um, logging in remotely can also participate. Um, so it's basically a quick, like five. Minute, maybe ten minute survey, um, that during the forum, I would send the link out to everyone and they could, um. Fill it out. So, okay, hopefully this works, there we go, um. So basically, the idea of the activity is to, um, pick a few different, a handful of, um, of areas in town. Where, um. Future housing could go, um, and then give them a, a. Eight or so, um, options for different types of housing and ask people what, um, they would. Feel comfortable seeing in each area, I'll call it like a study area, um, of the town, so. For this survey, and this will be pretty much the same activity that we'll do in person, too, I just. Put it into an online portion, um. So we've got cottage housing, mixed-use residential, townhouses, accessory dwelling units. Small-scale apartments, small-scale condos, um, large-scale apartments or condos. And senior housing, then also through in a tiny home community. Um, so these are kind of alternative housing types to single-family housing, um. And then. We went through, um, I worked with the committee in Spencer to select, I think it was five areas in the town. Um, that future housing could go, um, so we've got the town center. And then we asked folks, okay, so in the town center, um, what types of housing do you think would be a good fit here? Um, so people can select as many as they'd like, so probably mixed use and. Maybe some senior housing, um. Small-scale apartments, whatever they want, and they have an option to, uh, add anything that might be missing or any other thoughts. Um. So it's a pretty quick survey, and then there's this other parcel of land where, um, they're tearing down an old school. And, um, folks in the town are trying to decide what to do with this, um, like twenty-three acres of land. So if, what types of housing, if any, would they like to see there? Um, so I want to create this but for Berlin, um, any initial thoughts on this?
I think it's really cool.
Yeah, I like the fact that it's interactive.
Yep.
It's super cool, yeah, um, and I would love to have this open also, like for a few weeks afterwards, maybe posted on the town website for anyone who can't attend. The forum, um, because this is another great way to get input from the community.
How, how are you gonna find the spaces to highlight on the map?
The clerk decides.
That's what I was hoping to get your input on, um, we don't have to necessarily discuss it tonight, but maybe at the next meeting. Um, if I could come and, um, if there's like a list or a map of town-owned properties, that's always a good place to start. Um, if anyone has that available and could send it to me, I might have something, um, in our database, but I'm not sure.
You can use a zoning map, right?
The zoning map also be a good place to start, um. But if there's, yeah, any like town-owned parcels that the towns. Um, has thought about putting housing there before, developers have come to the town, maybe with, um, proposals before.
It's really only one, isn't there?
Emily, Emily, how many, how many sites did Spencer, um, designate?
Uh, I think we got five.
So, I mean, I think.
We don't want to do that many, too, yeah.
We, I think we could come up with. I mean, certainly we, we'd identify the center. Even though there's not a lot of. Well, this, I mean. We'd identify the center, I would think, we'd identify River Run. That option that we've got on that parcel to pick it up next to Boundless.
How about put the, um, sandpit on there, we've had a couple.
Right, that's, that's the site I was thinking of.
On River Road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and then what about the possibility of, uh? Is there something in West Berlin? That's tight, isn't it?
Well, what, what large parcels are for sale currently?
Um, now you could, well.
I mean, there was all that land down behind Wilson's, but I don't think that's on the market anymore.
Well, there's. Tortured, right?
The sign just came down?
I think the signs have been down for a while.
I thought I saw the sign recently.
Oh, maybe.
Forty acres?
Because somebody came.
It wasn't, I, I went online looking for properties in Berlin. To try to get a handle on the. Um, Henry Wheeler's piece.
Right.
And, and the, the piece, um, there behind the, the, the veterinarian showed up as well.
Oh, because people, um. An Anrad was filed, a conservation for that lot. By someone who builds fancy houses, so. Apparently, they decided. Not to go forward with that. Which is good.
Well, or that, there's a delay, I'm taking it down off the.
I think it was, I think it has been off because I check periodically, too, and I did not, I don't remember seeing that recently.
Well, I mean, I.
Come up with four or five parcels. I think.
Yeah.
Right, there's really not much town-owned land, but there is some land that is potentially available.
Right.
Yep.
Give people a chance to, you know, voice what they would like to see or possibly not see.
Sure. Yeah, no, as far as the format goes, Emily, it's great. Because it, it, it helps match up. The kind of housing with the location. In a way that, um. Is very helpful.
Yep, and, um, this is a part that's like. Kind of required when we submit the Housing Production. Plan to DHCD is they like to have a few sites that, um, um, the town is considering for future housing.
Well, it'll be fun, too, to see how the survey. Responses match up with the forum, um, activity. Whether there's a shift at all.
Right.
I like it.
Excellent, um, so I think I have my work cut out for me and, uh, hopefully I can, um, attend the next planning board meeting, whenever that is.
Yep. I think you've passed this vote in the Senate.
The twenty-seventh, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So would you want to be for eight o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily, whoa, Eloise has her hand up.
Oh. Should I stay on?
Yeah, hang on for two seconds.
Yeah. Eloise.
I was just gonna suggest the Tolman property. On Long Street.
There's an idea.
Yeah.
Well. The north side of the road now is owned by the quarry. But the south side of the road might possibly be. Site for some, some stuff. Because that's whatever he's looking to do, right?
Right.
Yeah.
They're looking for opportunity.
Yeah.
Yep, good idea.
Thanks, Eloise.
You're welcome, and you do have to post this.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's our regular.
And it would be worthwhile to put your. How to get in touch with you on the posting.
Right, oh, that's actually another place we could. Put it, though, we could email it to Mary and ask her to put it on the town website.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll head out now.
Take care.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, moving right along. We want to talk about the Highland Common sign for LL Bean.
Sure.
We have the standards and stuff that were sent around, scanned and sent around by Jay. Um. I think, if I'm wrong. When I looked at it, Matt tried to match it up and everything else, I think they exceed their ten percent. Of the available wall area. Does that look right, Jay? Can you verify that?
Uh, I don't know, I'd have to measure.
You have, it looks right.
Was it on the chart?
It's on there, on the, the, uh, printout of the Excel chart.
Let's just look at the drawings here.
I can't look at the drawings, you gotta look at the chart.
Look at the chart, right? You can't look at the drawing, because there's a giant hole in it.
Oh.
It ran through my scanner.
Oh.
Okay, we have a wall area.
Yeah, that's the one we want to look at. Because they do the calculation for us. You do it off the plan, but you have to scale it and all that nonsense.
Right.
So, should be the bottom one, the last one. So they calculate the area of the wall. And then they show you the area of the sign, and the sign should be less than ten percent of the wall area.
Hmm, it must have been two pages, I got one. So was that not in the, um, thing I scanned and sent you?
That's what you sent.
Oh, I did send it.
Yes.
Yes.
And what's it say about?
Well, see, that, that's, my question is, when you, when I match it up, I don't know whether I'm matching it up incorrectly or not. But to me, it seems that the sign area exceeded the available area.
Uh, to get one that's all put together, I'd have to go, took me a minute to do that.
Right, so it's. There's four pages.
Right.
Two of the pages are full pages and the other two are, only have three green lines on them. And it's the bottom green line is the LL Bean one.
Right.
So, area. Total with total square wall area C. Total wall area.
Right.
Is four thousand six hundred ten. Point oh four square feet. And the sign is four thousand six hundred and one.
The sign is what?
I'm sorry. Four hundred and sixty-one, I threw a digit in there somehow.
No.
Uh, four, four hundred and sixty-one, so it's.
Why did they? If, if I look at.
Foot too big.
If, if I look at their figure. Why do they come up with a figure like that? I, it, it, it seems like it's six point five feet. Tall. And thirty-four point five feet wide. The LL Bean. Are they? These just letters, are these letters applied to, to an existing wall or? Or is there some more substantial?
What they do is, is the whole total aggregate of the area of the sign, the perimeter of the area that it's gonna occupy. And then there's, there's two sizes, front and back, this store.
But Carolyn, you, your figure shows they're off by a foot.
Right, because it's four thousand six hundred and ten, and ten point oh four. Is the square footage of the wall, the total square footage. And the square footage of the sign is four hundred and sixty-one.
No, but there's this bonus, the bonus signage.
Where do you see bonus?
Columns PQ and R, is there some?
Oh. Amount of bonus, bonus signage.
The frontage.
So it says, amount of bonus, bonus signage, twenty-five percent times column Q. And they've got two point seven five and column Q is linear feet of frontage from right of way divided by a hundred. Which is eleven.
Yes, because the setback is larger than required. On a sign. Area.
Twenty-five percent of eleven square feet is one and some change, so maybe that's how they did it, they're right at their limit.
Right.
Yep.
Bottom line, easier if they exceeded, it's only a one square foot, so.
Right.
Right.
So I'll move that we approve the, uh, sign submitted by LL Bean for a sign at Highland Commons.
I'll second that. Oh, sorry, Tom, did I steal your thunder?
No, 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 I was just, um, putting mute off so I could vote for it, because this one I understand.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sign as presented to us. And we trust that it conforms to our regulations. Uh, as demonstrated by their calculations. Uh, is there any further discussion for this? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries, yes. Okay, so what usually we do is, I, 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 either Jay, you can do it, or I can do it, we write a little. Email to, um, Richard Hanks and saying that we've taken a vote on such and such a night and the vote was to. Approve the sign as noted.
Well, I think we should do is. We toss a coin, one of us gets to carry the map, Mylar around to get signed, the other one has to write them.
I, I thought I was carrying the Mylar around.
Oh, that's right.
Which gives me an opportunity to speak to each of you, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
That means Jay writes that memo.
Really, we got a template I can copy?
I can forward you an email that I send if you want.
Dear Richard.
Pretty easy.
Hey.
Awesome.
So we're back to five in favor on our votes instead of four.
Yeah, true.
Which brings us to the next topic, are we in the next topic yet?
We are, timely items.
Uh, there was one, there was one email that we were copied, it was to, it was to Richard about the lighting on the side of the National Lumber Building.
I didn't see that.
Really funny, because I drove into town the other night. And the lights, I don't know who put the LED lights up there, but. It's easy to. Get too much because the lights are just so bright now. Like if you had a four, four hundred watt. Metal LED lighting fixture in your place with a, you know, even a hundred and fifty watt LED one, it's blinding.
I didn't see that email.
Uh, I'm not sure I forwarded it, because it just came in the last minute, it wasn't to us, it was to Richard.
May I note that I would have to recuse myself from any of this because I'm in the butter to National Lumber, so.
Do you think it's a problem or not? Out of curiosity.
Um, I've been back and forth between Berlin and the vineyard, but I haven't noticed it. And I say that as a private citizen and, but I have to recuse myself from any. consideration of it as the board, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's really an issue for us, because we are
Standards.
We're not doing enforcement, right?
No, Richard's our enforcement officer, but we do have standards, it has to be X amount of foot candles at the perimeter of the property.
Oh, is that right? He's been appalled, at least, I think that's what, what the problem is, but.
Right, the, the resident, and the only reason I know this is because she got in touch with Conservation First. And I told her, planning board slash building inspector is, her name is Lauren, and she lives in Fran Gill's old house. So she's like, right there. And she said she's noticed a difference with the LEDs.
So do we, do anything about that, or let Richard handle it, and come to us if he needs us?
I would say that he is, is our zoning enforcement officer, and then if she doesn't get satisfaction with him, then she can come and see us.
Yeah.
Ooh, rain's coming down.
Mm-hmm. Liquid gold.
That's the only other thing.
Item?
I know what.
Timothy has a timely item.
So I I wanted to follow up on the discussions we've been having with the mall folks. And, and see if we want to invite them to one of our future meetings in order to review some of the options. I, I had a good con, Liz, is that her name?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a, a conversation with Liz a month ago, and you know, she would just brainstorming about some of the possible new uses that might be considered. You know, with Sears gone and, and some of the other vacant sites, and you know, possibilities of using the, the pad that was there for Jordans, and I mean, this permissible building area that, that never got developed. You know, they may end up ripping Sears down and configuring something entirely different on that pad, you know, they may try to acquire the Sears pad from Sears, Sears may want to do something, I and with Thomas aboard now, this becomes a lot more fun, because he was there at the genesis of the overlay to begin with, so the opportunity to sort of reflect on what we were trying to accomplish with that overlay, and here we are 25 years later, trying to re-envision what happens to that.
Yeah, I was so hoping I wouldn't have to do that. But I, I will say that, and maybe we can dig in the files, see if there's something there. But we did ask as part of the run-up to that to provide a high-level analysis of the repurposing of the property.
Yeah.
Because obviously you know, we have public amenities and so on attached to that. We have utility support for that. And it's, it's a valuable thing, and so I think let me contradict myself, as Whitman said. I think it's a great thing to be looking at, okay, how do we repurpose that uh, in a way that is environmentally neutral and so on? And I think we should be open to that.
Yeah, the, the Economic Development Committee has, in their conversations with the, well, with Simon when they were there, and, and now with this new entity that's holding the property, indicated that they would rather be proactive than reactive, and that if, if there's a way to envision what happens on that site for the next 25 years cooperatively with Marlboro as well, because you know, we saw Marlboro's mayor jump, jumped into the, the temporary proposal for you know, the, the contractor's yard. Obviously, we, we want to get Marlboro into the mix. Um, did I send around, she sent me a copy of a a, a proposal that Marlboro had developed for the the, the re-evaluation of Donald Lynch Boulevard in general. It, did I, did I send that to folks?
No.
I, I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it, Tim.
So I'll
Maybe listed, but yeah.
I'll send that around, because I thought that would help stimulate this conversation, and then you know, maybe at some point, we, we invite her with the notion of you know, a Maytown meeting addressing some of the possible options that, you know, we might want to make to that overlay.
I would ask that we invite the Economic Development Committee, too.
Yeah. So I'll send you around that
Yeah.
That survey, and then maybe, you know, later in October, after we get done with the forum or something, we could start that conversation.
No, that'd be great. I think they want to be proactive, we want to be proactive. And that's a recipe for success.
The other, the other item and the Regional Planning Commission, that, there's been talk there about the whole notion of battery storage, and Richard and I have talked about this, because he said he'd been approached by, or had conversations with a, with a comrade of his about battery storage. And you know, as we look down the road, I know that there's probably going to be conversations, and this is, again, going to put me out of the conversation as a member of the planning board, but associating battery storage facilities with photovoltaic arrays that are already in existence. But then also, how those might get distributed in amongst, and around a community to begin to deal with this imbalance of generation and use, and, you know, so um, I know that there's other towns that are beginning to be addressing this, I know Charlton, because they have a lot of solar sites. But I thought it, it probably would be wise for us to look at that one, because I think you know, Richard's had some thoughts about that, too, so I'd like to see us throw that in the mixes um, part of our conversation for maybe changes to the bylaw for annual town meeting.
I like that. I think it's consistent with the comments that I made to the proponent
Yeah.
At the gas station, and it, it wasn't just Carolyn putting the touch on me to join the planning board, it was the fact that we're that we're dealing with things like this, that gives me some enthusiasm for joining it.
Yeah. Good.
Awesome. Well, I have just an aside, an interesting aside, I was reading in my spare time, some of the documents pertaining to Sudbury's, the town of Sudbury's resistance to the transmission lines and the proposed rail trail that will happen on top of them. And the, the contractor is bond construction. So, I'm wondering if that was the project. And if so, that would be a massive amount of earth that would be moved, so I'm, I'm glad we made the decision that we made.
So in talking to the folks from Hudson, at some point, it was going to connect with Hudson Light and Power.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit of Hudson, a little bit of Marlboro, a little bit of Stowe, but mostly Sudbury. And it's along the old rail line.
So
Area power lines, huh?
Yep.
Huh.
And then the rail trail will be on top of it.
I wonder if that's the way to get a rail trail for cheap in your town?
Yeah.
Hmm.
If the residents along the way don't sue the town for 10 years, and, but it hasn't been 10 years, but it's been probably five. I mean, the
And let's not, let's not forget that it was deeply embarrassing to me that Berlin was not during my previous service as a town official, that Berlin was not supportive of that, it's like, are you kidding me? But, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there's been, did I share this with anybody that's cut? Berlin is on, oh, where the hell is it? There's $500,000 that's earmarked.
I can, I can speak about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the governor's infrastructure bill that passed recently, uh, there is a line item that earmarks $500,000 for Berlin only for furthering of the rail trail, that's not the word, that it's not for necessarily developing the rail trail, but it's for I, honestly, we don't know. No one knows who put it in there, no one knows.
I, I asked Sujathar at Central Mass, the Transportation Deputy Director, and she said she thought that probably Meg Kilcoin had pushed it in.
Wow.
Um, and she was gonna, she was gonna follow up and try to determine that. I said, it's there, but that doesn't mean there's any money, and she said, no, it doesn't mean there's any money, and it doesn't mean you get any money, but
Wow.
At, at least there's some recognition on the part of the state that we're the missing link. And
Wow. Who put the touch on it for that? That's fantastic.
Well, I don't We, so, so Sujathar's going to follow up on that, and I'll share what she tells us. Now, at the, at the Regional Planning Commission meeting, we had a quarterly forum a week or so ago, and it was on traffic in general. And trying to look at this 2050 visioning series that we're working on as part of the commission's effort right now. And we, we talked again, I said, it seemed to me that Berlin needed assistance from the planning commission to deal with the questions about the rail trail, because the, the town's position might appear to be that we don't want to proceed, but at the same time, I think that as part of the Complete Streets project, we indicated a willingness to continue to, to look at the question. And Complete Streets is going to be on the agenda of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee the next time we meet. And the Regional Planning Commission is, I think, willing to work with us to take our prioritization plan and begin to look at some proposed projects that are on that plan. And then look for some state assistance in, in moving some of those projects forward, particularly sidewalks, but you know, I think pedestrian, pedestrian access, you know, access around the town, handicap accessibility, bicycles, and then I think the rail trail has to lock into that somehow.
Hmm, yeah.
And there's, there's also this, pardon?
The, the reality is, is the, from the feedback I've heard, most of the town wants the rail trail. There is a small vocal group that doesn't. And
I think that's accurate, Carolyn, yes. And I think that there are arguments to be made that it increases property values in town, because, again, looking forward in the next 10, 15, 20 years, the fact that you can link into that from here
Right.
is really important, and I think it's, it's a great selling point.
Yep.
So I said to the Regional Planning Commission, there's, there's a rail trail that's being advanced through Westboro along into Shrewsbury to connect with Worcester, and, and they talked at a meeting we had during the spring about poking up through Northborough and connecting with the rail net, the, the trail network in Berlin through, you know, particularly on Pisgah. But the, the Aqueduct is, is an available use now compared to
Absolutely.
And so, and there's also the East Coast Greenway that runs through Berlin and goes on 62 to Linden and into Boylston, which that, that, if you look up East Coast Greenway Alliance's website, I mean, they've, they've got from their Maine to Florida proposed route, a substantial amount of that already improved and laid out, so again, I, Worcester was one of their goals, but if, if Worcester isn't more responsive, and that means if we're not more responsive, um, I think that East Coast Greenway is going to look for some alternative that avoids Worcester altogether, and so I think the commission in Worcester might very well be interested in conversations with us about how you get through Berlin to make some of this happen, so.
I think, yeah, I think we can argue with, are we going to do a redux of the Mass Pike avoiding Worcester?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and from what I know from our communicate, from the Conservation Commission's communications with the state about the rail trail, they, they, so a feasibility study has been done from somewhere out by the Quabin me, east.
Right.
Um. And from the Hudson Line to Coburn Road is pretty much a done deal. There's some tweaking that, you know, can happen if, if the if we choose to engage in conversation with them about it through the development plan portion of it, we can try to mitigate some of the impacts to some of the neighbors along that part of the route.
Yeah, and I mean, taking a page from what we did with respect to the major commercial developments in town, that may include a payment to a Butters.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Coburn Road to Clinton is more, the most difficult portion through Berlin, for sure. Uh, for several reasons. Uh, one is five corners, and one is parts of that rail bed has been sold to private property, as private property now.
So, right.
They have asked us if we would do a more in-depth feasibility study with, uh, you know, just for Berlin. Um, but they wanted us to come up with just under $40,000. And, um, given some of the political will in town for this, we chose to not pursue that at this time.
Hmm. So you know, I, I know Preston years You know, I, I know Preston years ago talked about. Ways to avoid five corners and that's why I, the, this. East Coast Greenway Alliance uses Linden Street um, that you get to the aqueduct. You know, you, you end up on the other side of Northbrook, you end up at five corners. You know, there's some problems there, but they might be mitigated somehow.
Hmm.
Um. And, and, and maybe you want to come off. Um, onto Highland and in, onto Carter into the center of town. Um, which helps generate some, you know, activity in the center. Uh, economically, maybe a wise decision. And then there's. Every so often I keep hearing discussions about turning Carter Street from the library to Highland into a one-way. Leading out of town um. But you know, maybe you've got a, a bike, an option for a bike wait there that then lets you get into town on a bike um.
And, and we have the, the Zewasko property.
Right.
Which. You know, in terms of soil. And. Other issues is relatively simple in terms of putting a bike path through.
Hmm.
And uh, it always struck me. And I. Was very fond of Preston, but I thought that uh. Following the train track through. A tunnel that. There was no way anybody was going to prove people going through. That going along West Street and widening that for a bike path. Was uh, was the better way to go. So I think. We're not going to solve this tonight, but I think there's lots of. Creative things we could do.
The, the interesting thing about the tunnel is that it's, it's been purchased by an organization that wants to um, turn it into the trail.
And they've gotten a grant to improve, to rebuild it.
Okay, then I, I stand corrected, but uh. I, I did say Preston. Because I've walked through it many times, like, are you freaking kidding me?
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's like creepy, it's like horror movie quality.
Well, and once you, once you get out of it, what do you do then anyway? You know, I mean.
Well, that's the, the hard part. I know that. There is a group in Clinton that is pushing for the rail trail to go through the tunnel. Um, because it would be a cool feature. But then you're in a neighborhood right on Route seventy.
Yeah.
So, yeah, unless you're going to build the trail, the bridge back over. The dam, you know, go over the dam or I don't know, but um, I don't really know how you get. Around the Watchusit Reservoir. Especially going that direct, you know, using the tunnel.
Bike ferry.
Hmm, ferries.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which would be local business, yes.
Yep.
Anyway, that uh. Well, these are the things that um. Really caused me to join the planning board, these, these kinds of exciting things, so. I'm glad we had this conversation at the end of the meeting.
Yay. Would you like a motion?
Other, no, not yet.
Nope, okay.
Well, actually, let's have a motion, yes, because then there'll be one other item. So let's have a motion to close the meeting.
Uh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any other discussion?
Yes. After we adjourn the meeting, can we stay on for a minute to discuss? Yeah, it's.
Yes, that's what I was going to bring up. Yep.
That's the only discussion.
Okay, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Um, Sanford, aye. Hearing, meeting is closed, nine thirty three PM.